Hi, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for January 4th, 2023. We can, oh, this meeting of the town of school, my goodness, wow. Happy New Year. Off to a rocky start. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and extended through March 31st, 2023. This meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Welcome, everyone. We have a full house tonight, so that's exciting. Meg?
Yep. The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment: we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools without regard to race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Any special recognitions tonight?
Not tonight.
No? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from December 14th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 14th, 2022.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote. And do we have our student reps tonight?
I think Allie is there.
Hi, Allie.
Hi, everyone. I hope that everyone had a great winter break today with the first day of school. Definitely a struggle to get there, but it'll be nice to get back into the routine and get back into the rhythm. One excited thing, one exciting thing about coming back to school is ski season. For me and a bunch of mine, some years where all, we all participated in ski clubs, so our initial first trip was supposed to be tomorrow, but due to the freezing rain, the weather condition, it's been pushed back to the end of February break. But there's a ski club, and then there's also a ski trip that occurs in March, and we're traveling to Park City, Utah, so that will be another fun event to look forward to. Mr. Knorr's AP golf class has a people conference on January 28th, so this month we're doing lots of preparation for that with writing our speeches and preparing for our conference. Eddie Fess just posted its eligibility list and application packet, so a lot of students, specifically sophors who are just now eligible, are going to be applying to that. And then we have our induction ceremony on, I believe it's March 2nd, somewhere in the first week of March. And then finally, Mrs. Berg just posted that there's a new crochet group.
That's cute.
So that will be a new thing for lots of students to get involved with. That's all I have to report for tonight.
Oh, great. Are you going to join the crochet group?
I might consider it.
Yeah. That's awesome. All right. And when was the conference that you were talking about?
The people conference is January 28th.
Okay.
I think it's the final Saturday of the month.
Oh, okay. Great. Well, good luck in that. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
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 Nope. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Allie.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Thanks, Allie.
Okay, Dr. Chamberlain, I will hand it over to you for spotlight on students.
Thank you. Yes. This evening, our spotlight on students brings us some students from Bryn Mawr School, and they're going to talk to us about their Mitten Tree Community Service Learning Project. They're here accompanied by Ms. Beverly, their principal, and Mrs. Johnson, a first grade teacher.
Welcome. Awesome.
Oh, that's me.
No, he'll do it. He'll do it. Brooke, he'll do it from here.
You ready to be rock stars? All right. So I have the pleasure today to introduce to you our first grade teacher, Mary Johnson, and our second grade students, Grayson O'Brien and Mackenzie Quirkus, that are here today to share with you about Bryn Mawr's community service learning projects. Ms. Johnson?
So for the months of November and December, we partner, Bryn Mawr School partnered with some local organizations to help out our Auburn community. And Gracie and Mackenzie are going to tell you a little bit about what we did, so there's a few projects they're going to talk to you about.
Our first community service project took place at Thanksgiving. We collected food for the Auburn Youth and Family Services Food Bank to donate to families in Auburn. We collected food items during the school day and during our family literacy night. During the month of November, our school focused on kindness in honor of National Kindness Day on November 14th. The leaves on our giving tree show different random acts of kindness that students at our school did throughout the month. Our second community service project, we partnered with the Eddie Pond for our, for their holiday wreath stroll, which supported, Bryn Mawr helped created, create two wreath fundraisers which supported our school. In art class, Mrs. Bailey also made a Happy Holidays banner that was shared with the people at Eddie Pond from Bryn Mawr so they knew we cared about them too.
So our last and final project was our Mitten Tree. This project was inspired by our students that I had last year, which Gracie and Mackenzie were both in my class, and it was inspired by a story that they read, and they came up with a few ideas, and the story was called "The Mitten Tree."
The story about, was about a woman named Sarah that saw and noticed that some children at the bus stop did not have any mittens to play in the snow, so she knitted some and hung them on a tree for the kids to enjoy. She created so many pairs of mittens that all the students in need had worn mittens to wear, and someone shared yarn with her to make them. So when Mrs. Johnson shared this story with us last year, it was March, and it was too late to start a Mitten Tree, so we created one this year to help keep Auburn warm. We had many coats, mittens, gloves, scarves, and hats that were donated to the Auburn Youth and Family Services.
So as you can see, the Mitten Tree was inspired by the students in the class from last year. Some of their ideas included donating to local community and organizations, but they also wanted to go around Auburn and leave some mittens and hats at local places where people gather in case students forgot their mittens or their mittens were wet. So we're hoping to expand this project next year and add a little more to it. We're going to keep up our giving tree throughout the year, school year. We have a couple plans for this spring. We might do a Hometown Heroes Tree and dedicate it to our local first responders and military members that can be on display for Memorial Day, and then pair it up with a reading tree as well. So we have some good ideas coming too, and we hope to continue this throughout next year. So just, we want to say thank you to the Auburn community and our Bryn Mawr families for supporting all of these wonderful causes. Thank you to Mackenzie and to Gracie for their, for their pride and effort and, you know, the courage to be able to come up and speak here in the school committee. We're really proud of you guys. So thank you, everyone, for your time today.
Yeah, thank you so much. Can we shake your hand?
Good job.
Second.
Second.
Good job.
Thank you.
Hi, Gracie. Read the dog.
Read the dog.
Hey, awesome job.
Good job. That was awesome. Awesome job.
Awesome job.
Wonderful, and the way you read, it's terrific. Awesome.
Really good.
Yeah. Awesome readers.
Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome give us.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Good job. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
If you need any help.
Job, yes. That's the best.
So cute.
That doesn't make you feel good.
I know.
Wow.
I feel like I would cry if my kids were.
Yeah, I know.
Maybe we could get the kids crocheting at the high school to help.
It's so nice to get, like, the schools together involved that way. It's great, yeah.
Maybe have the high school kids teach the younger kids, like, maybe how to make a glove or two.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know. My 12-year-old does it. She loves it.
Yeah. It's cool, so. Really cute.
All right. Now on to the boring stuff, and here we go.
Unfinished business. Before I get into the FY24 budget, I just did want to take a moment. We had some time ago taken COVID-19 off of our agenda, but I did just want to comment that since our return, which has only been really one day with students, we have 18 reported positive cases this week. I don't think that's any, to anybody's surprise. We're going to see that potentially continue to increase. We are doing all we can in the schools with thorough cleaning, hand hygiene, hand washing. We have masks for anyone who wishes to wear them. I put that out in a notice over the holiday break, but we just ask that people be vigilant, consider getting vaccinated. If, if, if that's of interest to you, those are still available, and we'll continue to keep you posted. Most importantly, if they aren't feeling well, please stay home, right? Even though in my memo, I said, but that's not the point. We want everybody to stay healthy so that everybody's in school, right? But if they aren't feeling well, to please stay home. So just wanted to give a brief update on some unfortunately unfinished business. So moving on to the FY24 budget, we have had a couple of presentations related to this over the past several meetings. So tonight, we bring to you a budget representing a 4.35% increase from the amended FY23 school budget, and I won't read the, I mean, it reflects an increase from $28,973,070 to the new budget amount of $30,232,276 for an overall increase of $1,259,206.66. And if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to entertain them.
Okay. I know all of us got a couple emails throughout the day today, and I, I know you also have talked to someone, Dr. Chamberlain, so we're fully aware of the concerns. And Meg, you wanted to-
Oh, I have a letter.
You have a letter from someone, so let's, we'll address that, and then we'll let you kind of explain-
Sure.
-from there, so, okay.
All right. This is from Mrs. King. She's a teacher, ISN teacher at Packchuck. My name is Kathy King, and I apologize, this is really small, I couldn't print it. My name is Kathy King, and I am the ISN teacher at Packchuck Elementary School. I am writing in response to the question if an ISN room should be opened at Swiss next year. I definitely feel that it should be a priority for the district. I have been overjoyed to watch my students be, being welcomed into their school by both their peers and their teachers. I have watched my students have blossomed and have begun to make friends with their peers in the inclusion classrooms. I am thrilled to watch their peers address my students in the hallway or ask them to sit with them during specials or lunch. This is true, this is the true meaning of being an inclusive and unified district. I've watched as homeroom teachers have made these students welcome in their classrooms by providing them with desks and materials just like their peers. I've worked in previous districts where this was not the case. The students in my classroom were very much viewed as different from their peers and were not included in many activities. It would break my heart to see them try to communicate with their peers and be dismissed. I have been so proud now to work in a district that is so welcoming to all members of the school. We have done some reverse inclusion. In addition to inclusion time, they are welcomed into their homerooms. However, if these students are, that have made such significant, that have made such significant gains are not allowed to remain with their peers because of their not being an adequate classroom at Swiss, all this hard work will have been in vain. It is also doing a disservice to their peers since they will no longer have contact with these students until sixth grade. Middle school is hard enough for changes for these students. That is very unlikely that the friendships that have been started and developed will remain intact three years from now. Moreover, what kind of message does this send to the students that these peers just disappear for three years? I urge you to vote in favor of an ISN classroom being opened at Swiss. By voting yes, you will be voting to show ever and that Auburn Public Schools is truly an inclusive school that is unified. You'll be voting to show that every student in Auburn is important. You'll be voting to show that the Auburn Public Schools teaches every aspect of what it means to be included, accepted, and valued. Thank you for listening, Kathy M. King Guera.
Thank you. So for those folks who don't know, we talk about an ISN room. That acronym is for intensive special needs. So those, for, those are for us students who may spend a majority of their day in a substantially separate setting. And several year, well, I want to say maybe two years ago, so Swanson Road did have an ISN room, and, and don't quote me on the dates, I think it was two years ago. There was a decision made that the students that, there were some students at Swanson Road, that we'd had some turnover in staff in that program, and we had some intensive special needs students who we felt at the time would be very well served by moving to the middle school, where we had a very experienced educator. Those students had seen some turnover in the staffing in that classroom, and we felt that they had had a disruptive setting and that this was going to provide them with a more stable setting with some very expert educators. And so we did that on the basis of the needs of the students. It was never done because we didn't value an ISN room at Swanson Road, and at the time there was a very small number of students that would be moving to Swanson Road. So it didn't seem effective at that point to continue with that. However, you will know from the conversations we've had about the budget that this position for a substantially, for a teacher of students with significant special needs has been in the budget from the start, along with support staff to accompany that. So we recognize now with the population of students that will be moving in that we do need it again. And, and you know, these things vary from year to year, but the decision was never made because we felt we could disregard the needs of the kids. It was actually made in support of the students at the time. But times change, and our student population changes, and again, this budget reflects that. And I, I think throughout our conversations, you know, there haven't been many questions related to that, right? We've, we see that there's a need, and I think across the board, you as a committee have so well and fully supported our special students, all of our students, obviously, but certainly our most special ones when they've needed it, and this is another reflection of that. So that position is in this budget for you to consider and vote on this evening. Okay, great. Yeah, I think there was, I don't know, maybe rumor mill or something? I'm not sure.
That's what I'm guessing.
Yeah, so. The classroom is coming back, and we have, it's in this budget, so, yeah. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns about the budget from the board?
Through the chair, does that, does this budget include the request by Dr. Lopez as well for additional staff?
That is the, that is the request.
Okay, that is the request.
That is the request, yes, for that special needs teacher and the support staff, yes.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY24 draft budget number of-
I would read it from above. There's a little typo in that number right there.
Oh, okay. $30,232,276.66 sent to the town administrator for further review and approval.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much for everyone involved.
I mean, that is, it's a very tedious process, especially when there's so many different concerns and valued opinions that go into it, so we really appreciate, and we appreciate hearing from parents in the community as well. That's what we're here for, so don't hesitate to reach out and communication, we communicate, and things get solved, and we realize that, you know, it's not, the sky isn't falling after all, so. All is well.
Okay. Let's move on to tiered focus monitoring summary.
Yes. So this is something that you may recall from last year. Every several years, DUCY conducts tiered focus monitoring visits with schools. So we went through that last year. It was related to special education, civil rights, all of those areas in the work that we do. So there were a couple of corrections we had to make. One was a template for a letter that we had to update, so there were, there was nothing major. But as noted in the email that's included in your packet, everything has been corrected, and our next scheduled activity is a Group A tiered focus monitoring review, which will focus on student identification, IEP development, programming and support services, and equal opportunity. These get carried out every three years after, we were Group B, so it's these two kind of categories that you get, you go through. All public school districts in Massachusetts are included in these monitoring cycles, but the information included just simply shows you that the couple of corrections that needed to be made have been made, and we are free to go until they come back for the next Group A monitoring process in this 25-25 school year.
Any questions? We'll move on to policies.
So you have three policies that are before you for their third reading. One for, related to harassment and retaliation, an updated equal employment opportunity policy, and updated equal education opportunities policy, which tonight would be the third round with these, so we would be looking for action to be taken on the changes. And again, all of these changes come from recommendations made by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, so that we all are working on, you know, consistent type policies and that they are appropriate for, for school districts like ours.
Okay. Can I get a motion? We'll do one at a time in case there's discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated equal opportunity, employment opportunity policy.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated equal education opportunities policy.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. New business.
That's you.
Well, thank you. So back in December, Dr. Chamberlain, Dr. Chamberlain and I held a meeting with our district mental health team, which is counselors pre-K through 12 across the district, and it's something that we will be meeting with them on a regular basis, and Dr. Chamberlain had started that before I had arrived here. At our, at our first meeting, we talked about the different interventions, supports that we have in place for at all of our schools, with the goal being to establish, and I don't know how much, how familiar you are with what Massachusetts has gone to, it's a, it is a multi-tiered system of supports. And so we talk about Tier 1, which is programs that are available to all students, Tier 2, which are some students who are struggling with certain things, need some additional support. That's, they're getting, they're getting Tier 1, and they're getting a little bit more support and practice with the skills that are taught in, in Tier 1. And then we have Tier 3, which is for a very small group of students who need either individual work or small group settings. And so at each school, we had conversations about what is available for students at each of those tiers, and so we've been mapping that out, and the goal is to see where we have strengths and where we might have some gaps, where we need to address those. So that was our first meeting, and ultimately, the goal is to take a comprehensive look and to replicate some of the things that are going well in certain schools that could be replicated in other schools, as well as to find places where we can improve the services that we have. So our next meeting is next week with this group, and we're going to continue that work and also have conversations around using a mental health universal screener to make sure that we are getting the right connections for students to help where they need some support.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Through the chair, I actually was talking with an Auburn parent this weekend, and this parent said that she's noticing that her daughter is definitely from Swiss, bringing stuff home that is, knows that she's like having small group with the guidance counselor, and the kid's coming back and saying like, well, you know, this is how I feel. And so we're definitely, like, and I'm seeing it in my own house, that they're really bringing, like, I know Ms. Dio at Pack does an unbelievable job. She's worked with both my kids, like, she just, like, they come home and they talk about what they're doing in that little guidance pullout, so it is definitely helping the kids, so.
That's great to hear.
Two thumbs up. A little shout out to Ms. Dio.
That's great. This is the help we need for the kids, you know.
And it's definitely showing. I mean, I'm seeing it even, like, but this parent said, like, my daughter is using terminology that I know that she is getting from guidance at Swiss, and she's, it's nice to see them using that terminology. Like, I am feeling frustrated, which is a hard word for kids to kind of understand, but she's definitely bringing that techno, bringing that terminology home, so it's important to put those good words in kids' mouths to understand what they're feeling and how to control their bodies and their minds and things like that.
Good.
And as you all well know, we've talked about it nonstop for the last few years. The social, emotional needs of our kids are changing. They're expanding, they're more prevalent. I mean, the same can be said for adults, but we see it widely in our kids, so this is a really big area of emphasis for us as we move forward.
It seems to be paying off.
Yeah, they're doing a good job.
Yeah, it's great. Awesome. All right. Thank you, Alan, for that presentation. All right, Cecilia. Your turn. Business and financial report.
Good evening, everyone. So in your packet, I provided a year-to-date budget report dated December 20th, 2022, for your review. I've also, in addition, I've provided a listing of budget transfers dated December 20th, between the same series for your information and between different series for which I'm seeking your approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any regard to those.
Do we have any questions? All right, I'll seek.
As good as usual.
Yeah. Okay. I get a motion to accept?
I make the motion to approve the list of transfers dated December 20th, 2022, as presented by the business manager.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cecilia.
And then moving on, I, as is customary every year, that we, I bring before a listing of the grants. I'm a little late doing it this year. I usually do it a little bit earlier, but I have in front of you in your packet a listing of all the grants that the Auburn Public Schools have received this year for FY23. We've received the Title 2A grant again for $38,585, which helps with new teacher mentoring and induction program, stipends for mentors and mentor coordinators, and teacher professional development. We've also, again, received the 240, which is the IDA Special Education in the amount of $629,601, staff, which provides staffing for extended year programming, to special ed teacher salaries, added district special education tuition, contractual services, special needs transportation, special ed supplies and equipment, and special ed dues and memberships. Again, we've also received the Early Childhood 262 for $18,763. A portion of the salary, a portion of that goes towards the salary of a preschool teacher and also includes instructional preschool materials. We, again, have also received the Title 1 for 305 grant, which in the amount of $231,011, which helps with math and literacy programming, peer professional salaries, teacher salary, summer programs for students entering grades K through 8, as well as MCAS prep. We, again, have received the Title 4 Federal Grant 309 for $16,791, for professional staff stipends, programs, and supplies to support student families and social emotional health. I just want to bring your attention, I, I forgot to take off, I had the IDA, EA, ARP 252 and 264, which we got last year. I forgot to take those off, but we did carryover money for 252. We'd received last year $140,531, and we carried over $46,000 into this year that we're allowed to use. And then the 264 grant, we received the $13,093, which we're going, we carried forward and will use this year as well, and those are the things that, we'll use them for, for support staff positions, contracted services, text materials, and adaptive equipment for classrooms. And then the 264 is for consultants and professional development for teachers and sports staff.
And how much was that carryover?
The 252, we carried over $46,000, and the 264, the grant was for $13,093, and, and we carried that all over. Because we're trying to use up all of our monies. We have our SERC grants that we're coming to a close on using. They'll be carried through till the end of September 2024, and that, so we're trying to just strategically plan all of our grants and use them effectively for the best interest of our students. We also have two mini, not mini grants, but two private grants. Every year, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce- Every year, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce awards grants to teachers who submit for projects. They're usually roughly in the amount of $250, and they're for projects at Auburn Middle School, Auburn High School, Bryn Mawr Elementary, and Swanson Road Elementary. So that was $3,000 that the Chamber had graciously awarded to our teachers to do these projects. And then we also have a private grant from the Major Broder Foundation for Gardening in the Cooking Club for $850, which was an award for the, the High School Gardening and Cooking Club to amend, cultivate, and expand the current garden at the high school. So those are basically the grants that we've received, so.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
Should we add the Elks donation onto that? Is that considered a grant?
Yeah, that would be a donation, not a grant.
A donation, okay.
Yeah, and I have not heard from them. I'll reach out to Mr. Standard again this week as far as when that's going to happen.
All right, and these, the grants above that are federal, are they one year or multiple years?
Basically, most, well, they're awarded for a year, but you, most of them, you can carry forward for one additional year. And so a lot of times, we'll use the majority of the previous year if there's any carryover, and then we start with a new grant, so. But they've been very gracious about allowing us to have, like, one year to roll over the monies, so.
Oftentimes, for, like, the Title I grant, we use for our summer school programming, and you don't get awarded these grants typically till August. And so it's kind of work that we keep our summer school money from the previous year, so it pays for that summer, and then it goes to the next summer. So that's kind of how they roll on. But we always go back and use the, whatever, whatever the earliest money is first.
Great, awesome.
It amounts to a tidy sum. It's good we're getting all those grants.
Yeah, supplements our budget, so it helps offset a lot of the costs to our budget, so.
It does, it does.
Thank you very much. Grant writing is not fun, so. It's a lot of work.
Mr. Keller loved it this year.
Oh, well, I'm sure there's many more you could look for.
Jane Steph is very good about writing, you know, individual grants. I know we had several last year from the middle school that teachers had written, and, you know, they're always looking for creative things to do. Especially with the Chamber mini grants, that's a big thing every year. The kids really enjoy that, too.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you to everyone involved.
If I could get your approval, so.
Oh, jeez, yeah.
It's just required every year to accept the grants.
Yep.
As a whole.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the listing of school department grants as presented for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, and that's the end of my report.
All right, great. Do we need executive session tonight?
We do not.
All righty, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.